Welcome to the April 6, 2021 joint meeting between the school committee and the Falmouth Select Board. I'm just gonna begin by calling the Select Board to order, and then the School Committee can do the same. So when I say your name, just please note if you are present. Sam Patterson?
Patterson, present.
Nancy Taylor?
Taylor, present.
Doug Brown?
Brown, present.
Doug Jones?
Jones, present.
And English Braga, present. And for the Select Board, just to note, we also have, I see the Town Manager, Julian Susso is with us, and obviously all of our IT folks behind the scenes to make this work. So, welcome, and I'll turn it over to you, Kelly.
Assistant Town Manager, too.
Oh, Assistant Town Manager, thank you.
Thanks, so I'll call the School Committee portion of the joint meeting to order for April 6. We don't take a roll call, so that's one less thing for us to do. But thanks for having us all get together, and thank you for hosting.
Yes, so, I just want to start off, we usually start our meetings with a pledge of allegiance, and usually Doug Brown has his flag with him. I bet he does, because he's very good. So if folks would just join me in a pledge of allegiance, that would be great.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, universal, liberty, justice, for all.
Well, we have to work on our, our timing a bit, but that's not, that's not too bad. If you have this many people on the screen, we are pretty good.
Maybe if we pipe in some music, it will be more organized.
It'll help keep us on track or something.
Someone has a metronome that just helps us out a little.
Yeah, I'd rather sing.
And I see the, our Superintendent, Dr. Lori Doerr is here as well. And so, you know, we really wanted to just, you know, start this evening by having a discussion that's been going on for a while, for many, many months now. And this is, you know, regarding a new position, which is kind of a reboot and a retooling of a position that the town used to have, whereby both the School Department and the town shares sort of the talents and the guidance and the acumen of an individual who really helps to raise awareness and guide us through around issues about diversity and inclusion. And this position hasn't been, we were kind of retooling it. We thought, we thought if we were gonna start from scratch, we might as well really look at the job description. And this process has been underway for, for many, many months. It started with a draft that came from the petitioners. This was a petitioners' article at the June Town Meeting. And it's been looked at. We've had a long period for public comment, and we've received quite a bit. So I want to thank, on behalf of both boards, I really want to thank everyone who took the time. We got a lot of input, really some wonderful insight from individuals who came from a variety of backgrounds to share their thoughts about this position and how we should describe it and structure it. And so we're here tonight, and the purpose of this meeting is to really hopefully take that next step, so that we're not just continuously talking about a job description, but we actually go out and we fill a position that is, you know, much needed and can really bring, you know, some positive change and movement to our town and to our schools. And so that is the hope tonight. So I would just say, I guess, you know, if, if it's okay, I think maybe we can start with the current job description as it is, and maybe kick the conversation off in that vein. Does that make sense? Kelly, or what's your thought?
Yeah, that sounds great. If I can just, I didn't think of it at first, but the start of your meeting is a little bit different than ours. So if we have people who are used to joining the School Committee meeting, the public comment is different. So I just want to make sure that anyone that's joining, that usually comes to our meetings, knows that they can submit comments through the chat and that they can email the committees, because we usually do it at the beginning of our meeting. So just in case anybody over there is wondering why we skipped it, you're welcome to enter things in the chat. But that sounds like a, a great way to move forward. And I noticed that we do have some people that worked really hard on it here as well. Some of the originators of the, of the article. And we've also got Joannie Santa here to address any questions or present anything. We wanted to start with that.
Great. Maybe, do we want to start maybe by hearing from Dr. Doerr and Joannie? If you just want to weigh in, will I use that pause to pull up the job description and screen share it?
Yeah, that sounds great. And Natalie, I know you worked really hard on this, too. So if you want to chime in with any commentary, that'd be great.
Thank you, Peter. So maybe let's, we'll hear some comments from folks. And then, Peter, if you wouldn't mind screen sharing, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
We promote Joannie, since she's spent so much time on the, the job description. And Natalie, I'll defer to you, if you'd like.
And why don't we lead with Joannie, since, as you mentioned, she and Denise really crafted this from the HR perspective. And we will lead with her, would be great.
Hi, Joannie.
Welcome, joining.
Oh, you're muted, do you want to start us off?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, thanks for joining.
This is a fantastic night, because there has been quite a bit of work done to get to this point from a lot of stakeholders who have given of their time, who have spent time not only crafting the job description, but also providing their feedback and their point of view in terms of the position and what it means to the town of Falmouth and how the position will help enhance the work that we're doing around diversity, equity, and inclusion. And it's a very exciting time for us to have this meeting and to hopefully get this approved, so that we can move on to the next stage of recruitment and interviewing candidates.
Great, and maybe could I ask Joannie, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but could you just talk a little bit for folks who maybe haven't followed it, but might be watching tonight? Could you just tell a little bit about the process? I mean, I know this, this job description has gone through several iterations and that you were, you know, really part from the beginning to kind of where we are now. So would you mind just kind of letting folks know kind of what the process was to get to where we are right now?
Absolutely. So in, in the fall, first I want to start by saying that we're able to exhale a little bit because of the vaccines, because, you know, we've been living with COVID-19 for, for a little bit over a year now. But in the beginning of the pandemic, one thing we wanted to make sure that we didn't lose sight of was the work around diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so as soon as we could, after we launched the school year, there was a lot of conversation around this position. And in November, we had started, by November, we were able to post a draft job description on both the town and the School Department's website for public comment, and that didn't come easy. It meant spending a lot of time from everyone, those who gave feedback, the folks on the Affirmative Action Committee, School Department, the Town Park, putting aside some of the important and, and safety, you know, we were doing a lot of work around safety and getting our students and educators back and launching a school year in the height of a pandemic. And yet, we wanted to make sure that this piece was not forgotten. And so for us to be able to have posted it in November to open it up for public comment, I think, you know, deserves a round of applause for everyone that was involved, because it was a Herculean effort to carve out time and to work on this when everyone's personal and professional lives were split in so many different directions, trying to manage the pandemic as well. That being said, we had a lot of public input. The public was generous in taking a look at it, letting us know what they thought was really strong and what really needed to be tweaked in order for it to be a job description that was able to bring the true goal of the position to fruition and to have a level of support that the position could take off in a way that would serve the people of Falmouth, the, the residents of Falmouth. And after we closed it and took public comments and were able to embed some of the feedback in there and relook at what we did, we put it back out there to the Affirmative Action Committee, who looked at it with a very critical eye, as they should have, and were able to give additional feedback. So we went back and forth, I want to say at least two, three times, until this very last process, when we received some feedback from members of the Affirmative Action Committee and thought we should give it at least one more look, one more chance to be able to update it, so that the definition, the duties, the responsibilities, the qualifications were all in line with the type of work and service this position was meant to have. And what you see in front of you is that last iteration. It included feedback from the diversity, I mean, the Affirmative Action Committee, but also volunteers on the committee that aren't necessarily voting members, but wanted to make sure that we had some feedback from the community at large.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I know some folks just might be, you know, tuning in and haven't kept a close eye on the process. And I, I think it's helpful to understand how we got from June to today. So I, I thank you for that summary. I really appreciate that.
Kelly, did you want to add any, anything to that? Because you were the School Committee's representative to that, that, that effort from this?
That process, yeah. So first, Joannie, thank you so much, not only for all of the work that you did, all of it. I think Joannie is very humble in terms of all of the work that she did. It was a big lift, and I appreciate that as well. And I think it was a wonderful opportunity to really collaborate with stakeholders in the community, because as Joannie mentioned, we were open to feedback. We wanted feedback. And, and I think it does show in the various versions that were drafted and created. So I look forward to this step, where we can sort of look at it together with a fresh set of eyes and, and move forward. Because I think the ultimate goal is to have someone in place as soon as possible to really hit the ground running with this position.
Lori, did we forget anything?
I think they covered it very well.
I think so, too.
But I'm very excited about that we're at this point. I know it's, it's been a long thoughtful process, which was needed, but I'm really glad we're, we're here tonight to be able to discuss this.
Great. So thank you, all of you, for that intro. Should we bring it up? And do you want to? There we go.
Excellent.
Oh, I lost everyone now.
This is Peter, so it's only going to show a small portion of the job description. Feel free to direct me to flip through pages as you like.
Great, so what I might do, just for folks, I know that there are probably sometimes folks who join us, and it is maybe a little bit easier sometimes to, you know, have stuff kind of, I'm not going to read every part of it, but just to get, set the stage a little bit. I know there are some folks who it's a little bit difficult to, to view it online. But essentially, the definition, as we have it now, is to provide leadership, advocacy, and outreach in the areas of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Works collaboratively, collaboratively with the town and school-based stakeholders to develop initiatives, provide professional support, and craft resources to increase awareness and support of equity and inclusion. Falmouth's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Officer will actively engage students, parents, staff, and community members to further behaviors, attitudes, and policies that support a culture of respect and tolerance. And then it breaks us, if you want to scroll down a little bit, Peter, to the, where we get to Essentials, Duties, and Responsibilities. I guess what I, I might just start off by asking folks, I know one of the most recent bits of feedback that I got was that there were some, and this was from Dr. Peter Clark, that there was a concern that it, the role wasn't proactive enough. He felt, and I don't know which final, I don't know if he saw this final version, but his feeling was that he thought that the role was maybe not as proactive as it is, you know, kind of a little bit more reactive.
And I'm going to take a guess that a lot of the, that email that we received as well was commenting on an earlier version, and that some of the comments that, because the School Committee also gets all of those comments. It's not just Joannie and Natalie that get to see them. So the, this iteration, this latest iteration, I feel like does include more of that than the previous versions. So I, I certainly can't speak for him. Is he here? No. But in my view, this version of it is more proactive, and you can see that more in the definition, where it's developing initiatives and providing leadership and actively engaging, which the, I think, is what Peter was getting at, I suspect.
I, I would agree with that. Can you hear me all right?
Hear you great.
Because I think several of the things that when I looked at, we obviously expanded the definition. We made some word changes. We, we, I think there was some rewriting in certain areas. I like some of the terms we used, collaboratively, engages. So I think we modified, expanded, and really, I, I think it's really nicely done. I was really impressed when I read it. And I think it covered a lot of things that would make it, quote, proactive.
One of the things that Peter Clark mentioned that I thought was notable from my perspective is the role that this person would play in really reviewing our own policies and practices. And I didn't see anything in there. It's all outward-oriented or problem-solving between staff, community conflict, and that sort of thing. But I think there is a legitimate role for really reviewing our own governmental policies and practices for a person like this, so that it gives it a little bit more leadership and coaching-level responsibility. So that's something to consider.
But I, I look at the definition, and it does, in that very last sentence, talk about attitudes and policies that support. And so, and I believe that policy is written in one or two other places as well, because we did talk about that. And, and I agree that sort of rehabbing the infrastructure, and you do that around developing of policies, is really important to the position. So we did have that conversation.
Very well.
Peter, could you scroll down just a little bit for me, toward the end of the bullets? I'm not sure, Sam, if this gets to what you're talking about, but the next to the last bullet. Peter, if you could keep scrolling. Yeah. A little bit further to the, next to the last. And it's, it's the advises on the development of anti-racist policies and practices that promote diversity, equity, and inclusion in all areas of town government and school district. I'm not sure if that gets at what you were speaking to, or?
Yeah, I think that probably does. Thank you.
Do we, do we foresee on the school end, having this person working with the Policy Subcommittee to review existing policies as well?
Yes.
Okay. Because this says creation of anti-racist. So I just want to make sure that we're, it's not just, we have a lot of policies on the books, some of which, I know that the Policy Committee has really worked hard to update them, but it would be nice to have fresh eyes as well.
Yep.
Can I just comment on that next to the last bullet? It focuses specifically on anti-racist policies, but maybe there should be anti-discrimination policies.
Peter?
So when we, just, just to clarify, we want to make sure that our policies and, and practices are not discriminating, right? So maybe, maybe it does need to be slightly tweaked. Not that, we definitely, new policies are great, but we want to make sure all of our policies are, are not discriminating. Just trying to clarify the entire bullet now that we're having this conversation.
Maybe just drop anti-racist from it. And then it's just, advises on the development of policies and practices that promote diversity, equity, and inclusion in all areas of town government and school district.
I think I would keep anti-racist as well.
I do, too. I'd rather add words.
I see those as different. So I think if you're going to add discriminatory or, or non-discriminatory, I think you still need to call out the anti-racist.
I agree with Nancy on that.
I suggest you add review existing and new policy.
And now you can see why we did this together in a joint meeting.
I defer to the wording, I have no problems with what you're suggesting.
Existing and new? Doug, is that what you said?
Yeah, I would say so, because there's a new person coming in. They should look at what we have in place now and comment on that as well as new policy.
So, um, first, for people who were sitting on the, on the committee that worked so hard on this, Joannie, I'm looking at you even though I can't see you. Do you have thoughts? Did these topics come up at all around this particular item? Is there something we're missing?
No, I don't see that we're missing anything, including anti-discriminatory with anti-racist. Certainly would strengthen it, but I wouldn't swap one out for the other. They're two different things.
Then, and I agree, Joannie, and maybe they should stand alone, however.
Well, let's see.
So what I wrote down, based on the two comments, was that if, that the person advises on the development of and review of existing... Oh, no, that doesn't work. The wordsmithing is terrible.
Kelly, how about advises on the revision and development of anti-racist and anti-discriminatory?
Yeah, that would work.
Policies and practices.
Could I, could I interject a couple items? I don't want to interrupt School Committee members or the Select Board. Just a couple of quick background comments, if I may. I do also want to thank, as Town Manager, I want to thank Joannie and Natalie for their extraordinary work, and my colleague Lori as well. I do want to note that Denise Coleman regrets she can't be here. She had a prior scheduled vacation this week. So unfortunately, this fell at a time when she could not be here. But I appreciate Denise's hands-on work on this with the Affirmative Action Committee, Joannie, Joannie and Natalie as well, and also Select Board member Nancy Taylor, liaison to the Affirmative Action Committee. And Nancy's been extraordinarily helpful in developing the policy. So my thanks to all of them and to the Affirmative Action Committee as well. And just a comment on that bullet point we're talking about, advises on development of. I will just tell you, my view of it is, when you're advising on the development of, that includes reviewing everything. That, that's how I interpret it. If you're advising on development of anti-racist policies, it's on existing written materials, and it's on future written materials. And I, I just think it's incumbent in that role and within the bullet point that advising on the development includes looking at what is in front of you as well as what would be coming in the future. So I know we can add a lot of words in there, but it means, it means to me that that's the intention from the get-go, and I just want to share that.
And I agree, I, I believe that was the intention. I, I'm just wondering if we need to pull apart anti-racist and discriminatory, was my only comment.
Yeah, I guess my sense was that emphasizing, in that same bullet point, the promotion of diversity, equity, and inclusion, that's about being non-discriminatory. So I think it's, it's in the very nature of, of the title of this position, and it's in the bullet point itself. So no harm in adding that clarifier. But again, I, my sense is that, and my view has always been that it's, it's in there already, but no harm in adding it.
I have to say, I think I would rather err on the side of explaining something more, as long as we're not changing the intended purpose of that bullet that was clearly, you know, included intentionally by the committee. But Nancy, why, why do you think that those should be separated? Because to me, they are very connected. So I guess I don't understand why, why you want to break them apart.
I, I think it's fine the way it is, as long as in any conversations, we, we highlight both. I, I see anti-racist as something that needs to be called out. It's, it's a lot of what we're dealing with right now. And non-discriminatory, I think, couples with a lot of other things that you can put under that.
Okay.
So for me, calling that out would be important. But, but I think we did have this conversation in our group, and I am comfortable with the way it is worded. It was just a, just a thought, as we're going.
Okay. Thanks. Megan, how do you want to take this? Do you want to take, I mean, clearly, we have a suggested edit for this. And do you want to go through any other items before summarizing all the edits? Do you want, how, how would you like to proceed?
Yeah, I guess maybe it makes the most sense to kind of just hear from, as we maybe scroll through, to hear if there are any other, and we can kind of look through the chat and see if there are any other comments or concerns, and then, you know, look at those changes or proposed changes as a whole.
Not used to having a chat, so.
So let me go through, let me go through the chat. So let me just go back up to the top. Here's a couple of things, and I'll just go through them. Some we have addressed a bit. Okay, so can this person review existing policies? We, we've kind of talked about that, I think. And then, let's see. Okay, we talked about the as intended, correct? Yep. And can you, from Sandy Famon, can you add including reviewing existing and new policies? We, we've talked about that.
Yep.
Okay, I think that, that, I think we've covered what's been in the chat, although I think there was one further up. Let me just see, said something about civil service, or no?
Yeah, there was somebody that wanted to know.
Yeah, there was something about that.
What is meant by the civil service bullet?
Deb Burglin was asking. Julian, do you, can you speak to that?
Certainly, that, it just clarifies that this position does not have a formal role in collective bargaining with our unionized employees. That is a standalone process under state statute.
Okay. And I saw Sandy was asking about the word conduit in bullet three, and she felt that it was very ambiguous. So maybe if we can just, Peter, could you take us to bullet three?
Sure, just one moment.
Thank you.
And Joannie or Natalie, do you want to, or Nancy, since you are also there, whenever you want to explain the intent of this bullet? So we're all on the same page?
Yes, so I think the intent of this bullet, and, and I'm going to let Julian speak to the specifics surrounding state limitations and collective bargaining, that piece, but was to say that this person would serve as the link between the various stakeholders, whether that's a community member and someone in the town or a school department. So that is the, the use of the word conduit, right? That person is the link to have, sorry, I was just seeing things come up in the chat. Essentially, the link to facilitate change, whether that's communications, meetings, actions, whatever that looks like. So that is the overarching intent of this specific bullet.
And just speaking to this, I, I just want to be clear. This person isn't just a transmitter of information.
Right.
This person has really, I think we've gone through a very specific, active, you know, responsibilities, and, you know, this is a job description that's not about someone who is just passing information along. And I think that, you know, if you look at this job description as a whole, you're going to see those words, coordinates, works, engages. You know, the only place you see conduit, you could use the same word liaison, but I think, you know, that is a word that we, we use in other ways within our community that makes it sound almost a little bit more of a, we use it a lot, you know, in a kind of less formal, less structured way. I think here, it's that idea of that, really creating that, that link. And that, so the word conduit here doesn't undercut all of the other very specific action-oriented responsibilities that have been outlined.
And I think, it is, it's exactly what we talked about, Megan. And I think, Natalie, if I'm not mistaken, we may have had liaison in there originally. And we decided that the word was not strong enough.
Exactly.
Shows conduit, because it, to us, it seemed more active, more action-oriented than to liaise with.
Exactly.
And that's why we voted, and I think it was Natalie who suggested the word. And we were like, oh, yeah, that fits better, because it's more action-oriented.
Right.
I keep trying to scroll. Are there?
I think we got all of them. I think we got all of them. I guess what I would, maybe an easy way to do it is just to ask if there are any other public comments, if you wouldn't mind entering them into the chat so we can kind of go over them. And just make sure we've covered any of those last minute concerns, you know, for folks who are looking at it right now. So if you have another concern, another suggestion, if you wouldn't mind entering it into the chat, we can take a look at it. And that would be really helpful.
While we're, oh, sorry, that's what I was gonna.
Sorry, I have a question or a recommendation. So there are two bullets later on that are under supervision. And both are under supervision, and I feel that they are more around the responsibilities. So that is the bullet of engages in discussion with employees, students and community members, including parents and guardians. I feel that that isn't about supervision, it's about a responsibility. So this is just kind of moving some things around. And then performs responsible functions of a complex nature. I feel like that is also a responsibility of the job, not a supervision piece.
Okay. Anybody, I can't see everyone, so and I know, I know none of us can. So if someone wants to just jump in who was part of that crafting, like Joannie or Julian or Natalie or Nancy, just jump right in.
Well, we could easily add the, adjust the header to call it supervision and responsibility.
Does, does that sound good?
Megan, I could, I could offer a thought. This is Peter Johnson's stab. And I was not at all involved in the crafting of this job description. But I am very familiar with the town's structure for the job descriptions. And it's very similar to many other municipalities. And it is sometimes a little counterintuitive, but the, the way we structure our job descriptions under supervision. We, we like to include that first paragraph that speaks to how the position is being supervised. And then that, that section at the bottom performs responsible functions of a complex nature. It, it's a place where we address the level of judgment and discretion exercised by the position. And it's, you know, we have a bit of a template and it's not always intuitive. But we, the reason these things are in these sections is because we score the job descriptions in this way and it's somewhat standardized. I know that's a little confusing and maybe not very helpful, but it's an explanation as to why things, why the paragraphs appear where they are.
No, no, I think it's helpful. I know that part of the discussions that took place were around some other language that's commonly used in the job descriptions that felt, you know, uncomfortable or folks had questions about. So these things are, you know, somewhat, they start with a template. Would it be problematic to add the word responsibilities there?
Not in my view, no.
Okay, great.
I just have a question about that because the bullets or the heading, the subheading before also says responsibilities. So just that we're saying essential duties and responsibilities, and then we're saying supervision and responsibilities, just saying that.
Okay, so maybe we can use, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I agree with Peter. I think that, and I also agree with Leah that it seems like it's out of place. But I don't think I'd add responsibilities to the supervision for exactly what Peter just said. Or Leah just said that it's above. Again, we did follow the template of the town, but we used the language that we wanted to see in it.
Can I suggest in the third paragraph, you just simply take responsible and just put performs supervisory functions of a complex nature, requiring a high degree of professional judgment, communication and independent action. Supervisory functions, which falls under the category of supervision.
Are they doing the supervise, isn't it, I guess it's the difference between who's doing the supervising and who is supervising others? Does this position supervise anyone? That they would be performing supervisory function?
Not directly, no.
I don't believe so.
So what if you just, I mean, I guess part of it is we can just move, you know, if we're moving those things out, they kind of become, you know, maybe in just a different section. And I think Sandy is saying that she feels, Sandy Famon Silva is saying she believes it should be in the ability and knowledge section. Some folks have talked about it being in the responsibility section. So I guess those are kind of, we have a few options, but it's not really a changing of the wording. It's just a moving of maybe two paragraphs.
Have I, performs interpersonal functions of a complex nature.
What about performs functions of a complex nature? Get rid of responsible. If that's, if, you know, if we feel like that's where we're getting caught, just performs functions of.
That sounds good.
I actually, I like that a lot.
Yep.
But when you take out the responsible, you're eliminating the need for the use of your good judgment in those interactions, where you're going to really use.
Performs functions of a complex nature, requiring a high degree of professional judgment, communication and independent action.
I really like Nancy's, just keeping it simple, making it functions of. And I also feel like the responsibility piece is mentioned later on in that sentence by the professional judgment, communication and independent action. I don't know that we need to leave that.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Another option, if I just to interject, drop responsibilities from the previous one, just call it essential duties and call this supervision and responsibility. Essential duties covers all those bullet points.
Okay.
Does that feel?
And we quit, we quit stumbling over that word responsibility.
What are folks' thoughts on that?
I prefer that out of all the options that we've had. I don't like the idea of moving them completely under the essential duties category as long as, because I think it's it's important that the content be right, but it's also important that it follows the structure of all the other positions in the town. And I'm afraid that it'll be confusing. Does Leah, does that satisfy what you were looking for?
Yes, I mean, I think it's just, it was confusing to me that when you're talking about how someone's going to be supervised, you're putting in what their duties are or what their responsibilities are. So I, it just didn't align to me. But I didn't know it was a template. And I don't know if always templates are correct. You know, it might be that it's time to change a template sometimes too. So maybe we could, you know, adding responsibilities might help with that.
Andrea, is your question on this similar item or are you on something totally different? I don't want to finish this content and then have you have your question.
I'm totally different. I would have jumped in otherwise.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Anything else on this item? Is everyone all right with this, with moving the word responsibilities? I can't see any of my people, so just pop.
Yell out if you're not.
Yell out, yeah. Usually everybody's waving at me, but I can't see anybody. And before we move to a public comment, I would like to know, you know, hear from Andrea and whether or not our committee has any other things that they would like to address.
I have something to address as well, but I can wait for, I can wait my turn, obviously.
All right, Andrea, do you want to go ahead? You've had your hand up a long time.
Sure, thanks. And I think I'm going to take a little bit of a step back too, because I've been trying to, you know, sort of look at this, you know, the most recent updated version that we have. And also look at all of the feedback that we've been getting, because we've gotten quite a few letters and comments about this. And, and, you know, I know that we started this out saying that it's the retooling of an old position. But, you know, when that position went away, there were responsibilities that didn't just completely disappear. They were taken upon by other people within the school and within the town. And I think that's important to know because I felt like a few of those comments that we got were really looking for some of those pieces that I think are happening and happening fairly well. The other thing that, you know, really comes to mind reading this job description is that this is a huge job. A lot of these areas right now, the way that they're written, and I think that's what people respond to a little bit, is that they're, they're a little ambiguous, right? Because this is something we're starting new here. And the position, you know, being created how it was on town meeting floor, the way that came about. And thankfully it did, because, you know, I think we all really needed a kick to get this going. And I appreciate that that happened. But it also didn't happen within the context of a bigger vision, right? And this position, this person isn't going to, you know, fix systemic racism in our town and in our schools. So we can't ask everything of this one person. And the way I'm viewing this really is something that needs to build over time. We need to develop that vision. We need to figure out what resources we need. We need to allocate those resources. You know, we were talking about, is this person someone who will supervise others? Personally, over time, I think the answer is yes. But we don't have any of that in place because of how this came to be. And I guess something that I want to make sure happens is that this person who will be living and breathing this job has a lot of say in where that goes. In, obviously in consultation with others. And I'm not sure that that is exactly spelled out in the job description right now. That they are going to be developing a vision for diversity, equity and inclusion for the town and our school district. So I think that that's really important if we want this to be something that's going to make real and lasting change. And I think we do. I think I've been hearing that from, from everyone involved. So I'd like to, to see that. I also want to be, again, cognizant of that being such a big job right now, what we're asking of this person. We do, we want to get a really good candidate. We don't want someone to see this and kind of be afraid of the position. Because I think the other piece of that is having two supervisors. And that we want to make sure that it's very clear how that supervision and evaluation is going to happen. Because that is something that without the right amount of coordination can easily become something that is honestly just too big for one person to be able to do. So I just, I guess I'm, I'm looking for some boundaries on that. Plus making sure that this, this person has real influence in moving this, what might become a department forward in the future.
Do you have thoughts on where something like, like, have you envisioned what you would actually like to see? Like, are you looking for an addition? And if so, I'm sure you've thought of, I mean, you make excellent points. I'm just wondering where you would want to go next.
It's, it's, it's in that development and shaping of a vision, right? And so there's a lot here where it's saying, reach out to the community and, you know, sort of that outreach. But I want that outreach to have like a goal essentially, right? And that is to be explicit about saying that part of that is to develop a vision for this, for our town.
If I could just say, I would suggest that go right at the very beginning.
I think it actually fits well with the strategic plan line. Is that where you look, you're looking, Doug?
I was thinking right at the very top, right?
Oh, the very top.
Where it says definition, the first thing to say, I think, is what Andrea mentioned, that this person's going to have to develop the vision for inclusiveness and anti racist and, you know.
Or maybe collaborate in the development. Because I, I think Andrea, your point is, is well stated, but I think you touched on two sort of disparate. Okay, sorry, two sort of disparate threads, which is we both want to make and empower this position to be transformative and impactful. But we also cannot assume that this one person is going to create our entire town policy around something this big. They are going to be a resource, a leader, a point person. But if we are sort of saying, guess what, you're coming to this town for X amount of dollars, which is a healthy salary, but not one in which you're asking someone to develop an entire, right? So I mean, it's not all on their shoulders. So I think we have to strike that balance. So to, I like if we, I like the idea of putting it in the definition. Something that helps point out that it's that broader piece that you just put your finger, finger on Andrea, that it's, you know, in concert with, you know, all of the other relevant departments and, you know, committees, et cetera, to help develop however we want to word it.
Right, help to craft the vision.
I have an idea about that, Megan. So in that sentence, works collaborative, collaboratively with town and school base. So at the end it says, and craft, and craft a vision and resources. So I'm not sure if that would be the right, but putting it in there, craft a vision to increase awareness and support of equity and inclusion. That might be a nice spot for it because it does talk about the collaboration.
I like that.
No, I'm actually, I'm surprised that I don't agree, because I usually agree with Leah and Andrea on this, on things all the time. But I'm not sure that I agree that I, that this position should carry that responsibility. I think that work should be our work. You know, developing, setting the goal of even developing an equity vision for the school district should be the work of the school committee. And the same should be true of the select board. And this person can help us work through that and, you know, consider the things that are important and maybe even help put it to words. But I feel like, you know, it is our role to set those visions for the future and what it is we want. This person is going to help us actually achieve that. I don't know that I want someone not only carrying the whole weight themselves, but someone potentially who's not even been in town for any time at all, feeling like that's a monumental task. It could be an entire job in itself to define a vision.
Kelly, that's why I said, put it in with that sentence about working collaboratively with the town and school based stakeholders. So working with them.
I agree that I wanted them to be part of shaping this so that it wasn't only happening externally. It doesn't mean that we should stop doing any of the work that we're doing. But that they need to have some type of a role in it because of just what they'll be doing in the community, they'll be uniquely positioned.
Yeah, I just am worried that we're pushing every, all of the work onto this one position instead of doing the work ourselves, which is our responsibility.
I agree with you, Kelly.
It's too easy to push all of that onto somebody else.
Hey Kelly. I'm sorry, Nancy.
No, go ahead, Melissa. You've been waiting.
No, well, not really. This isn't what I originally had said. I'm sort of just making a comment on this one. But I kind of feel like, maybe not this description, but the overall vision is a working document similar to our policy manual where we're constantly looking at it. We're constantly reevaluating, reassessing, you know, things come up. How can we be proactive? How can we fix things that are no longer relevant or accepted? So I think that this person definitely should, is going to do what we're hopefully carving out. But I, I think that this person also should be working with us with both the select board and the school committee. And we're all working together. We're not like putting this on this person and then, well, it's yours now. And that I feel like it's, it needs to be a joint conversation with the three teams, I guess.
Yeah, I guess I would, if I, you know, I would see this person as, you know, the same when we have leadership roles in any department, right? I mean, so whatever it is, it's a good example at our select board meeting last night, we talked about water restrictions. At the end of the day, the board is going to come up with whatever the policy is around water usage for the summer. That happened to be what we're talking about. for the summer, that happened to be what we're talking about. But we lean heavily and we are educated and we are guided and informed by our department heads, in this case DPW and Water, because that is their deep dive. That's where their level of expertise, that's where they're, you know, they really are the, you know, in that milieu every day. That is where they are focused. But they bring that expertise, they bring that thoughtfulness, that education, that experience to whatever board. In this case, you know, it'll be to both boards at some point. And that helps inform the policy that we are charged with setting. And so I see this person as having an incredibly fundamental role. But again, it, it's much like, we're not really reinventing the wheel. I mean, it's much like what we do with most of our, our folks in, that are leading our departments. You know, they really are the ones that we look to.
I agree, Megan, that we're going to need the support of this person whose expertise it is to support us on these things. And I think that, that's where the collaborative process, but also the, really them leading us into the right direction of how to do this well is really important.
Excuse me, there's a comment in the chat from Deb Burglin, which I think is actually key right now. It says, this is, she says, this is why the word lead should be in the duties where it never appears, because this should be a community effort, not the sole responsibility of the person in the position. And then I was looking right at the, the start of the essential duties and responsibilities. And on the first bullet, it says, works collaboratively, collaboratively in the development and implementation. What if it said, works collaboratively in leading the development and implementation? Could that be? I know we, we're trying to limit how much work we're putting on this person, but we do want to indicate that this person is in the lead, although we all have to pitch in and help. Does that sound right?
That was actually the sentence that I was thinking we would put vision, because it refers to strategic plans. So having strategic plans, vision, and initiatives that promote diversity, equity, and inclusion.
But it could still say work collaboratively.
Yeah, in leading.
Leading the development and implementation. I think that would be a good addition, if you guys agree.
Leadership is the second word in the definition of the job description.
It is. I see that too, yes.
Yes.
I think, Doug, I feel a little uncomfortable with that, just because that's so much responsibility to, to lead the development and implementation and monitoring of training, when this person has to learn about the school system and the town and to be able to take on that lead to develop and implement would be hard. Maybe as, as the years go on, we could build something like that. But I just feel like we need to work collaboratively first to get those leadership skills to be able to do that.
Once we've hired them, we can't change their job description, right?
Certainly you can adjust it, but it, it would need to be something that you do collaboratively, not unilaterally.
Right.
And, and wouldn't you see this position, I mean, this is just my thought, growing over time? I mean, someone said something about potentially this person becoming, you know, a department head and, and leading. And I think we talked about that a little bit, because I think I mentioned that, that, that this is our, our step. But I, I see this position growing and changing as the person really gets to know the culture here. And I'm hoping that this isn't a document that can't be changed as we move forward.
They're probably going to realize they need an assistant after the first year.
Well, on top of that, Nancy, I mean, that it might even become the fact that the, the, that person takes on a higher role and then this role gets filled in, right?
That's exactly what I mean.
Yeah.
It's, it's got to be sort of a working document and, and things are going to shift. Because I see this, if we're going to make substantial change, I see this position has to grow. And whether it becomes a department or how that sort of mushrooms, I don't think it can stay the same and be effective long-term.
So Nancy, I completely agree with that. And I guess what I've been wondering is, what, what is our plan for that, right? We don't want to put it on this person. We've talked about our boards. Is this something, do we have a general plan of how we will take that next step? Whether it's, you know, another joint meeting between our boards? If it's creating an advisory group, like, how are we going to develop what that, you know, we can't just hope that it happens, right?
Well, wouldn't, wouldn't this person have a big say in that? Wouldn't this person have a big say in identifying what we need to do to make this work? But I don't think we can expect that on day one of them.
Right. So I guess, are you saying we can't put it in the job description then? Is that, that's what we want to happen because we don't want to make that a requirement from the beginning? Then how do we get that in there?
I think, I think it talks about pieces of it. I mean, just look in terms of changing policies, right? Sort of changing the infrastructure. And then after a year, I'd want to hear what this person thought, or what they think our vision, our bigger picture vision moving forward needed to be to get us where we want to be. Does that make sense?
So you would be saying that there would be essentially a yearly reporting out to, like a joint meeting like this?
No, I, no, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that, that this person, when they're boots on the ground, right? Because they're going to know a lot about how, what the policies that we have now, how those policies are enacted for good, bad, or ugly, right? And what we need to do differently. So that person would be coming back to us to say, this is where I need to, to focus in order to move towards the goal of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And they would then help us reshape whatever that is going to look like. But somebody's got to be in here, boots on the ground, paying attention to all these pieces, meeting with, with people. And, and it wouldn't just be yearly. I would anticipate that this person would be reporting out to the, to the town manager and the superintendent monthly. I mean, I wouldn't want to wait a year. But they would be addressing these things as they go and then making recommendations as to what they see that we need to do differently. What policies they're recommending, are they changing to existent, existing policies, practices that they're going to recommend? I think that's really important.
Can't. Can I talk?
Go ahead, Terry. And then we got to go to Melissa. She's been so patient.
Okay. Since this is a new job, can't we put in the initial paragraph that as a new job, we have a rollout plan that will start working in collaboration, getting to know the policies, working with the policy committees, and the, and after a certain amount of time, be prepared to take a leadership role? Why do we have to start with a leadership role? We can add that in, but build into it. Because it is a new position. So if we put that in our opening paragraph description of it.
Kelly, just a quick thought on that, not to interrupt Melissa. I hear what you're saying, Terry, but I think from the committee's perspective, the subcommittee's perspective, this person is an expert in their field, right? And so that they don't, they will, from the beginning, will have the the capacity to have that leadership role. So I, I think that is why maybe we may not want to add that to the, the introduction of the, the job description. Because again, the, the expectation that this person is experienced and is an expert in their field.
That's helpful. Thanks, Natalie. All right, Melissa, jump in.
So I was going to wait on this comment specifically, but it's been sort of touched upon in the last few minutes here. I was sort of waiting for it to come up during physical requirements. But like I said, it just keeps, you know, there's snippets here and there. I really think, and I'm pretty firm on this, I really think that this needs to be a Falmouth resident who, and that's a requirement, not a preferred in this position. Somebody made a comment a few moments ago that, you know, this person would be new to town and, you know, they'd be jumping in. I couldn't disagree more. I really strongly strongly suggest that this is a, a town resident. So I didn't see it mentioned anywhere in the description or in the physical requirements. And if I missed it, please help me. But there's no talk of any, there's no talk of that anywhere. And if that was purposeful, if you could talk me through it, that would be okay. But if it was an oversight, that's okay too. But I, I really, I think that, that's sort of my thought.
Are you looking for a residency requirement? So that this person could be somebody who, you know, is coming from somewhere else, but you want to make part of the job description a residency requirement that they live here? I think we didn't say it had to be a Falmouth person, because we want to get the best person.
Thank you.
The best person, no matter where they're coming from. The one that we, the committee, I shouldn't say we, because I, I don't think I'll be on it. But the person who has the best credentials, the best, meets all the criteria, but is the absolute expert. I think if we limit ourselves to saying they have to be a Falmouth resident, that's an issue. That's different from adding a residency requirement to the job description.
So I, so I just, if I can clarify.
The cost of housing is so great that you've created an enormous barrier that's going to call out an enormous number of qual, very qualified and potentially very effective people.
If I could just clarify, I, I'm reading the chat. I appreciate your comment. So I just, I can't walk it back. I, I, not that I'm trying to walk it back, I just, yes, I, I want somebody who is absolutely the best for the job. I'm not putting barriers up and I'm not saying it has to be like a, a native. Like, that's not what I'm saying at all. I just feel like if you're going to give it your all, it would be preferred, or it would be somebody who's going to be here, somebody who's going to be here all the time, not just during working hours or, I don't know, I just, I kind of, if you're going to be in this role and be part of the community collaborating with everyone, meeting people, getting to know the community. If you don't, which is okay, I would just hope that you would want to immerse yourself. And I guess, yes.
So from your comments, Nancy, it sounds like the committee took this topic up, or no?
I don't believe we did. I think we left it wide open to saying, we just want the very best person, the very best credentials to serve this town. I understand what Melissa's saying about, you know, immersing yourself and investing in this community by living here. I totally get that. I just have the same concern that Sam has, that, and, and we've seen it as a select board, that moving to Falmouth is, there's nothing to buy and anything to buy is outrageous. So I, I would hate to make that part of the job description and discourage people from applying when they may be the very person.
Fair enough.
I have a, I have a comment about, as we're talking about preferred things. I don't know if it's, Kelly, is it okay if I go on to a different topic?
Yeah, yeah, I think we just need to keep working our way through it, or we're going to be here till midnight.
So just the, I, I really appreciate the multilingual aspect of this position, but I just want us to be accurate. So if we're saying that this person needs to be fluent in Portuguese, Spanish, I assume we're saying English too. This is multilingual, not bilingual. And just to that point, is there a preferred, based on our community? Would, would we have a preferred for a Portuguese-English over Spanish-English based on our community needs? Just to clarify that a little bit, and to make sure we have the appropriate descriptive word there.
So I read it as saying, and Nancy just got kicked out, so she's going to try and log back on. I don't know if anybody else is having the same problem, but, so my, maybe the folks who worked on it can just say, we're having, we're setting a preference for someone who is bilingual, so the assumption being English and then either Portuguese or Spanish. I know how it reads, it reads bilingual Portuguese and Spanish. I think it means either one of those as the preferred second language.
That is correct. That is correct, Megan. It is, that is the preference.
Yeah, so it should be or.
Or.
That should be or.
Okay.
And is that, is that true, is there more of a preference for Portuguese-English or Spanish-English based on our community needs? Do you know?
So the committee didn't, we didn't dig into a preference of which one. We just recognized that it needs to have at least, the candidate needs to have at least one of those secondary languages.
Can I just jump in? Could I just ask IT to maybe reach out? Simone, honey? Could I ask IT to maybe reach out to Nancy? Because she can't figure out how to get back on and she definitely wants to be part of the conversation. Peter, could you help coordinate that?
Sure, we'll, we'll do. Are, are we, do, should I leave the job description?
Yes, please. I'm going to send you her cellphone.
Okay, so it sounds like the committee didn't make a determination per, or didn't prefer one or the other, Leah. But I think you're right that it should be or, because it doesn't read right as it, as it stands. I hope everyone's all right with that. So we'll make that suggestion. Were there any other, any other items that anyone had that they'd like to?
Yeah, Kelly, I had, once we're down into some of those specifics there for the job preferences, I was wondering if somebody could address which part of the job required driving? Because that was specifically called out.
I think that's one of those general pieces that's in a lot of job descriptions. Is that right? Natalie or Joannie?
Correct. Is there a way to scroll down to that section of the job description or did we lose that?
Oh, we might not have that ability right now.
Okay, so yeah, I mean, that is the general thing. Number one, it's, oh, there we go. Yes. Yes, I mean, that's just sort of one of the, the generic add-ons into a job description. And the expectation is that this person is driving around the community and around the Cape to attend various meetings and meet with stakeholders.
Okay, but, but, and I guess I was just, you know, wondering if that's the only option to accomplish that goal. And the other piece that jumped out at me, and I, and I figured they were probably from some of these boilerplate templates, but like Leah said, maybe it's time to update some of those. It, it had the vision requirements, include the ability to read and analyze documents. I mean, I think that there's many ways for people to be able to do that. I just wouldn't want to be setting requirements in there that weren't necessary.
I think though, the, the way that I have generally seen that is that vision, it just means you have the ability to read and analyze. I mean, you can do that in whatever the way is, you know, some folks do that with assistive, you know, technology. Some folks do that if they are, you know, using Braille. They can still read and analyze the document. So I don't think that it is, I don't think it is, you know, really singling that out as, as somebody who wouldn't be able to apply necessarily for that position. But that it does require the use of a computer and it does require analyzing documents as a particular task.
Yeah, I guess it just seemed kind of clunky to me when I read vision requirements instead of just saying ability to read and analyze documents. ability to read and analyze documents, because that can be done in any, like you said, many different forms.
And Andrea, that kind of goes with the other pieces, too, of speak and hear. Just to make sure we're not being discriminatory in that statement. So.
Kelly, if I may, on the, on the automobile part, I think I feel strongly that that should remain in there, because the individual who's going to be in this role, I think the more actual face time, in addition to any telephony and Zoom meetings and things of that nature, I think, you know, being present in a, in a lot of ways will, will prevent dynamics from happening as well by opening good communication and things of that nature. So I think the driving part should remain in there. Thank you.
And John, I would agree with you in being present, I think, is a big part of it. I just wasn't sure that, you know, driving an automobile would be the only way to make sure that happens.
Oh, we don't want them all walking across town. It's pretty significant areas to cover.
I, I think some of this, and we don't have Frank Duffy here, but I think some of this is some legal language, you know, that is generally required to be in there. So if we don't put in that they would be frequently required to speak and hear, however that happens, you know, I think we're trying to include some of the things that, that would be required in the job, but maybe we can wordsmith that a bit to make it less, I agree, it's a little bit clunky. Vision, I mean, there's a comma, not a period. There's a, there's some different things there that could maybe be smoothed out.
I have a question that's not really related to the actual job description, if I could. So if this job is going to be shared between the town manager and the superintendent of schools, is there going to be a framework set up for how that sharing will take place? Is it going to be Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at the school, and Tuesday and Thursdays at Town Hall, or we should set up some parameters, not necessarily in this job description, but I think they should be set up before the person's hired, of how that sharing will take place.
I'm confident that Lori and I can work that out without a problem. Okay.
All right. Were there any other items? I have, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, Kelly, I, I just, there is, there's just, I, and I know probably this is that boilerplate kind of template piece, but there are just some sentences here that just, I feel like just come off very negative. So the sound, professional, ethical behavior and judgment is expected as errors in judgment and breaches of confidentiality could result in poor public perception of school and town government. I mean, I think we're, we're saying that, you know, sound, professional, ethical behavior and judgment is expected in this position. Not that we have to put that negative tone on it. So I know I've had this comment before, but I, I just don't know why that's needed. This is a professional. This is not someone who we're, you know, needing to belittle or in this, so, it's my comment.
Joanna, could you just speak to how common that is? Because isn't that in most of our job descriptions, as Leah's pointing out, it's part of the template? And, and I do think that the reality is every employee for the town, if they don't perform their job, it can actually result in more than just poor perception. It can result in liability for the town. And, and I think that is part of what this tries to, tries to emphasize. But maybe, Joanna, you, you do.
Can you all hear me?
Dr. Ken, go ahead.
Yes.
So maybe Julian can speak to this. Then, it's not typical or ever seen in a job description for us on the school side, but I do know that Denise has shared that it is part of what's in the job description, especially for this grade and salary level for the job description. And to your point, yes, there, there are legal ramifications sometimes or consequences to our, our behaviors. I understand that the position is a position that we need and we need for the town in terms of our work with anti-racism and anti-discrimination and diversity and inclusion. And with that comes a lot of advocacy, but it's not a volunteer advocate. It's essentially an employee whose job is, it is to work, to lead this type of work that we're all going to do. There's a heavy lift for everyone. And we have to do that in a way that doesn't bring liability to the, to the town.
Thank you.
I could speak to that if you like, Kelly.
For the. I heard someone, but I, I can't see who you was. Yes, Peter, please, go ahead.
So it, it is a standard part of the town job descriptions, and the reason that it's in there is actually so that the position can be properly rated and scored in terms of what, how consequential and how important is the job? What, if the person doesn't perform well, what sort of an impact does that have? And the more of an impact that it has, the higher the position is scored. So I, I appreciate where you're coming from, and Leah, I think, you know, you, you mentioned earlier that maybe the template needs to be revisited, and perhaps that's the case. We have a whole scoring system that's embedded in our job descriptions. So it's a, you know, it would be a significant reworking of our classification system. But just to comment on why those seemingly negative phrases are in there, it, it does tie back to how we score the positions for pay and compensation.
Okay. So I have, since no one chimed in, I'm guessing we're coming to the end of the comments, but if I'm wrong, feel free to jump in. So I, I didn't have a firm resolution on where we were going with the vision and resources item. We had left it, I think, with, in the definition, it would say craft resources and a vision, or, or vision and resources, whichever, to increase awareness and support of equity and inclusion. I'm not sure where we left that. I think mine was the only objection, and I can live with it if the rest of the committee is happy with it. And then the item, the correction of and to or, and the advises on revisions and development of anti-racist and anti-discrimination. I think those were the only edits that, that I had. So we just need to resolve the first one and make sure that there's no other items before we go anywhere else. Does anyone want to weigh in on the vision piece? I don't know if that means that we want to keep it, or if we want to take it out. Megan, did you have a, a sense from the earlier conversation whether we were leaving it in? Oh, did we lose her?
Looks like she stepped away, Kelly.
Oh, I can't even find her on my screen. Okay, she did. Okay, that's fine.
I, I'm sorry, folks. I'm actually probably going to have to turn over my duties to Doug Brown, because I have a little bit of a five-year-old meltdown, so I am going to ask Doug Brown if you wouldn't mind just taking over for this meeting for a little bit, please.
I can take it from here, chief.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Good luck with it.
Yeah, good luck.
Okay, so, um, without any comment on that first one, I think that we're left with the and and or, and then rephrasing the item on policies to say advises on revisions and development of anti-racist and anti-discriminatory policies and practices. Those are the two edits that I have.
Um, Kelly, just, I'm sorry, to comment on your first one, I actually like where you had said to put the vision with the strategic planning piece. I felt that that aligned in a better place. So that's my, that's my opinion on it.
And Andrea, I'm just going to turn that to you, because that was your item. So does that meet your need?
Yeah, I was just looking at that, that section, and the, the hard thing about just the way it's worded, right, is where you had development implementation and monitoring of proposed training and awareness programs, and then strategic, and then the other things kind of dangle out there a little bit. So I think that that's probably the best place for it, but it just becomes one of those sentences that it's very easy to trip over, and it, it, it doesn't, it's not exceptionally clear, I think. And I know that, you know, there's so many people that spend a lot of time thinking about this and with the intention, and sometimes if you just want to put another word in there, I don't want that to kind of derail what they were getting out there.
I don't think it changes the meaning of it at all. And I think we talked enough about the importance of helping craft the vision that, you know, it's worth putting it in. I actually just caught another edit that I almost lost, which is to move the words responsibility. So the, I, I think we landed on this, to, the first, second title would say essential duties, and then supervision and responsibility. I think that that was one of the other ones. Okay.
So I would say to put vision in, oh, can we, can we move that back down just for a sec? To put vision in, so works collaboratively in the development, implementation, and monitoring of proposed training and awareness programs, strategic plans, visions, or vision, developing a vision. I don't know what to say.
I think it would be vision and strategic plan.
Okay, vision. And initiatives. All right.
Okay. Okay. I don't want to vote on it without Megan. Doug, how would you like to proceed? Should we, do you want us to take our vote first, because it takes us forever? Because I think it has to be two separate votes.
I think we're ready to go. Yes, please.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the town of Falmouth Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Officer with the following edits? Moving the word responsibilities to the title for supervision, adding vision and strategic plan to the first bullet, adding the phrase advises on revisions and development of anti-racist and anti-discriminatory policies and practices to the second-to-last bullet, and changing the word and to or under education experience for Spanish and Portuguese. And no one has to say that all again, but it's all in my.
I make a motion to approve the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Job Description with the edited, with the edits that you noted.
Thanks, Natalie. And this is our second.
I'll second it.
Lisa, and any last questions or comments before we vote?
I just wanted to, to check, because Megan had said something about running some of that physical requirements pieces by Frank Duffy, I guess, and I just want to make sure whether or not that was happening, or if we needed to make any edits there.
Um, Julian, can you weigh in on what that process is? If, if it's just, just legal language that gets edited after it goes to Frank, how does that work?
Well, it's pretty much standard language for our job descriptions on the town side. I don't see Frank making a significant change, but, you know, we, we certainly, as a courtesy, will consult with him, and if he sees a a major liability issue, we can adjust it accordingly, but Frank has been involved in developing these in the past.
And I wouldn't think it would undo our vote, because it would just be the additional, it, it's not the actual job, just responsibilities. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. It's a roll call vote, and Leah, you're first.
Leah Palmer, aye.
I'm sorry, you almost cut out. Andrea?
Andrea Tharold, yes.
Terry?
Terry Medures, yes.
John?
John Fenner, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Katalopolis, yes.
Who did I miss? Where's Bill? Bill?
Ryder, yes.
And Kelly Welch, also a yes, so it passes unanimously. Thank you so much. And Doug, did you want to have your vote now, or come back to it so that Megan can vote? What's your preference?
I don't think Megan's coming back in addition to the, because she wasn't feeling very well, as she mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, so I think it was probably going to be it for her tonight. So is there a motion from our board to move this job description forward?
Go ahead, Doug.
Okay, Sam, is that a second from you, then?
That's the second.
Okay.
Patterson.
And so all in favor, Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Mr. Jones?
Jones, aye.
And is Nancy back? Oh, Megan's back. Hey, did you come back to vote for this?
I did. I, I can hear it over screaming. English Braga, I could hear what you guys were doing.
Okay, and I'll vote Brown, aye, and I guess Nancy's still not on connection. Okay, so we've adopted it, and I guess we're ready to move on to, is there anything else to do with this item? I think we're done.
No, I think that's it. And next, we have two other items on the agenda for tonight. One was talking briefly about pandemic, pandemic challenges. And Dr. Dore, was that you?
So Julian and I both had discussed to put this on, to have any update and where we stand. So I, I can certainly give a brief update on the, the school side, but Julian, if you would like to begin, I, I'll defer to you.
Sure, be happy to. As the select board knows, we had a, an update from Health Agent Scott Moran last evening, as you do routinely at your regular business meetings, and we're within about a little over a week of opening up for vaccinations for just about the entire universe, other than the youngest young people. And we're still having a challenge for adequate supplies of vaccines, but things are moving along, and Falmouth is in as good, if not better, shape than other communities on the Cape as far as older age classifications and higher-risk individuals. Having gotten at least one vaccination, and in many cases, two, I don't have those exact percentages in front of me. Welcome back, Nancy. The other thing that we discussed was the anticipated beginning of the beach season, and the fact that we anticipate the return to the full utilization of municipal beach parking, and the governor's office released information on that. We anticipate that they will return to a much more normal pattern of operation, but social distancing and mask-wearing wherever possible and outside of one's own group on the beaches and in the outdoors is, continues to be warranted. But as we all indicated, things could look a whole lot different here in the next 60 days, because there's a lot of remaining uncertainty and discussion about relapses and things of that nature. But thankfully, with higher and higher percentages of the population being vaccinated, we're guardedly optimistic that that's going to serve us well. And beyond that, we cope within the the town staff members. We, from time to time, have people that are lost to a mandatory quarantine, or have a family member that causes them to need to be out of work for different periods of time. We follow the state guidelines on that, but we've been able to remain in full operations of town throughout the 13 months of the pandemic, and it's a testament to the commitment and diligent work that my colleagues have put forward, and we're very gratified and appreciative of that. And we continue to work closely with the school department. Lori and I have communicated with some regularity. We've been involved in periodic conference calls. I know our Health Agent Scott McGann is in regular routine contact with Lori, and I know members of the school committee as well. Scott and I talk multiple times each week, and that kind of important collaborative relationship will continue. Bottom line, we're very fortunate that we've been able to weather this incredible, unfathomable pandemic storm, as well as we have here in the town of Falmouth. And the other piece of good news is that financially, because of the caution and care and good stewardship shown on both the town and the school side, all department heads, we are in solid financial. we are in solid financial condition. We closely monitor coming revenues. But we are guardedly guardedly optimistic that we're going to remain in a good place and have not had to endure some of the devastating cutbacks and layoffs that a number of other communities in the Commonwealth and throughout the country have had to undergo. So we're very gratified for that. And it's no accident, and it's in large part because of the the elected officials that we have on in this very meeting and their commitment to living within our means and getting the job done and supporting the professionals that are, you know, so privileged to be providing service. So that's my soapbox and my summary of where we are in the pandemic and happy to answer questions if I may. And I'll defer to my colleague Lori as well.
Thank you, Julian. And I echo exactly what you say about our financial state and our commitment. The Town of Falmouth has been incredible to the school department. And we, the support of everybody here is much appreciated. You know, we, the pandemic, we've kind of gone up and down. We certainly had some rough spots through the holidays in December and January. And then we had a slight break, very few cases at all. There is a rise, the same as there's a rise in Falmouth. Last week was our hardest hit week since school started. We had a total of 25 cases. And but since then, the last few days, we are certainly have a lower pace. And hopefully, that's a somewhat good sign for right now. But I am, you know, worried about the holiday weekend we just had and then our spring break weekend coming up. And I just encourage everyone, I hope everyone just heeds the advice that Scott McGann gives diligently. And so appreciated that we all, you know, heed the rules and and try to just hang in there. It is a great thing that we're getting the vaccinations. I'd also like to take the time to thank Julian. He was able to secure 100 vaccine vaccinations for our school employees. So that is underway and that's much appreciated. So but the number that's been offered, our department of 700 employees should be pretty set. The opportunities have been there all along. So with the Saturdays, that's been offered to the teachers and then the the two opportunities during this month that we've been able to offer. So I'm very grateful for that. So thank you. We have a great partnership with the with the town. And we all work together. It's for the greater good. And so I just appreciate it.
Anybody have any questions for either Lori or Julian?
Kelly, I don't have a question, just just a comment about vigilance right now. We are seeing these up the uptick in cases and just ensuring people are masking up, social distancing. I know we have a lot of people who are fully vaccinated, but we have a lot of people who are not. And so just making sure that our community is keeping the community safe is really critical right now. We want to keep kids in school. That's what we want to do. So let's work together.
End of that. Get more of them back for sure. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Thanks so much. And so the last item was a discussion about the T ticket school roof. And Patrick has been an attendee all night. And I think we'll be able to share some information about this if we can promote him.
Pardon me, could I just interject one item? Pardon me.
Please, Scott.
Nancy was not able to join us for the vote that was just taken. So out of respect for her deep involvement in it, I wonder Nancy, we had a four votes cast on the select board side for the job description with the four changes that were delineated. And I want to make certain you had that opportunity to weigh in. You're muted.
I am. I apologize. The internet just crashed and I couldn't do anything about it.
We knew it had, yeah.
So my question is, were there any further changes to the job description?
I'm not actually sure when you got bumped out. Would you like me to recap them for you?
Could you do them really quickly because I don't want to take up a ton of time?
No, it's totally fine. So we added vision into the first bullet under essential duties. So it says vision and strategic plan. We took the word responsibilities out of that heading and moved it. I think you were there for that, moved it down to to say supervision and responsibilities. We changed the and in Portuguese and Spanish to an or.
Okay.
And we edited the the first one that you were here for the anti racism statement to say advises on advises on revisions and development of anti racist and anti discriminatory policies.
And that was it?
That was it.
Okay.
Then also the also that we're seeking some guidance around the vision hearing and. Oh, yeah, and we're going to touch base with Frank Duffy about the vision and hearing requirements that are listed at the end.
Okay, so I would vote I.
Excellent.
Thanks, Julian, for that. It's great that everyone had a chance to.
Yes, I appreciate that.
So Patrick, would you like to just give us an overview of the T ticket roof project and what the process has been so far, what the steps look like moving forward, what the timing is, all that, all that good stuff?
Status update.
Thank you.
So in February of 2020, the district applied for for inclusion in the Mass Massachusetts School Building Authority's accelerated repair program to be included in that. And then the pandemic hit, so it wasn't so accelerated anymore. This past fall, we did receive notice that we were sort of brought along to the next step in that program. The MSBA sent out a couple of drones to map the T ticket roof and take some images and confirm that it is a approximately a 60 year old roof with some that we've been patching up for a number of years. And then we were, then we were told that we were, we were part of the program. What the next step in that is that the town is required to allocate an amount of money for Falmouth. It was been $100,000 to fund the initial design phase, the initial design, not the full plans phase in the OPM phase. And that was going to be done at town meeting in November. That got pushed off to January. As of January 25th, that was voted on. That allowed us, we confirmed that vote, that allowed us to go to the next step in the in this accelerated repair program. And we submitted the vote and a bunch of other documents and maintenance documents. And that as of as of last Wednesday, yeah, as of last Wednesday, we were notified that the MSBA has approved all that. And in the accelerated repair program, the MSBA assigns an OPM and an architect or designer to the project. So they they do the the review of credentials and assign. Jennifer Mullen and I have a introductory call with that OPM on, I believe it's Friday afternoon. And just the in terms of timing of this project from the very beginning, we really didn't believe, well, as the pandemic hit, we knew we really didn't have the sense that this could be done this summer. So it is a project that we're scheduling for next summer, the summer of 2022. So the OPM and architect do their work in estimating and getting and getting the project together. And I'm going to need, I may need some help from Mr. Suso. The it's a bit of a reverse process in terms of getting a sign off for this. There is going to be some language on the May ballot that is simply to identify how the town is going to pay for this. And I believe the it references a debt exclusion. And Mr. Suso, am I speaking incorrectly on that?
No, that's a correct Patrick in, actually, the language was voted and approved by the select board and it'll be the first item on on the ballot and followed by charter revision language.
Okay, great, great. So that's it. And then, once that happens, then the the full plans and the OPM and the architect and the design and that goes back to the MSBA. And they approve continuing along with the project and that and that the MSBA would for a town like Falmouth, the MSBA would ends up funding in about a third of the overall project. And then I believe it would go to town meeting to approve the 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 full cost of this. And we would be bringing it out to bid hopefully next next fall or or early winter so that we would have contractors ready to go basically a year from June. So that's where we stand right now. And if I'm not sure if there's any other questions out there, but it's a long.
And I just want to make sure that for the public, you know, you you outlined all the steps of the whole crazy MSBA process. And I just don't want it to get lost that the reason that we do that is to save us money.
Yeah. Thank you. Yes, the MSBA for a town like Falmouth will kick in about a third of the overall cost, hard cost and soft cost of the project.
Thanks. Any other questions about the T ticket roof? Doug, go ahead. Sorry.
Patrick, what's the total square footage of that roof? Do you know?
It's about 50,000 square feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they were indicating that the age of the building is 60 years, but the roof itself is more like 25 or so.
No, no, I think, no. As far as I've been told is the roof is the roof is an original roof.
But no, they changed it in either the late 80s or early 90s.
Yes.
I wanted to bid on it, but I was not quite.
Well, there you go. All right, that's good. That's good. Well, we've had, thank you. There's always someone in the in in the audience who has has prior knowledge. So very good.
Yeah, it's a staggering amount of of space to cover and the price tag is always shocking. But I think, Patrick, you said to me once, if you don't take care of the roof, you might as well not take a care of anything in the building.
First thing.
There is something like that, yes.
Any last questions about the roof project? I don't have anything else. Doug, you have anything else that we need to take care of?
I think we're good. So I just want to, on behalf of the select board, just say thank you for, you know, making time for us to come together this evening. I think we covered some, you know, just really important topics. And and hopefully, we're going to move forward on something that will be transformative. And that has been, you know, long in the works. So thanks to everybody who worked on that job description. And and just, you know, making sure that we we don't want the perfect to be the enemy of the good. We've got a good, strong job description and it's a place to start. And really, what's going to matter is finding the best fit for that position. And so that is what we're on to next. So all those folks who volunteered and really wordsmithed, thank you to everyone. And we look forward to moving forward.
Absolutely.
I move adjourned. Patterson, second.
I was in favor by roll call. Ms. Taylor?
Taylor, I.
Mr. Jones?
Jones, I.
Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, I.
Ms. Braga?
English Braga, I.
And Brown, I.
Great. Thank you guys so much.
And we need a motion to adjourn as well. Thanks, Melissa. And a second? I don't know who got it, but I'm sure Sharon caught it.
Andrea did.
Thank you. And it's a roll call. Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Bill?
Ryder, yes.
John?
Yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Katalopolis, yes.
Terry?
Erin Medias, yes.
Lisa?
It's a heart, yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
And Kelly Welch is also a yes. So it's unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, so much.
Thank you, everyone. Good night, Simone.